All right, I show it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order tonight is July 18th, 2022. We'll start with roll call.
Kriener.
President.
McConnell?
President.
Fortune?
Here.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Present.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and it includes approval of the agenda, approval of minutes from July 6th, 2022, approval of Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday service to Barbara E. Holstrom, DBA The Pub, and approval of pay request number one for $86,514.26 to Memerk Tiling Incorporated for the Runway Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved.
So I think you need to state that you're moving the claims to the
Okay.
Revising the agenda to move the claims down to the business section.
Yep, so we will move the claims to the business section tonight for the, for this meeting, so.
Okay.
Suck it. Rich?
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Next is staff reports. We'll start with public works.
Andiruz was out at the wastewater facility today. They were out there to trench in the power for the gate for the fence project and get power to our new pole. The pole should have been set today or tomorrow, and then the fence company will be there within the next couple of weeks to finish up that project. The incubator at the wastewater lab went bad on us last week. It was bought new in 2004, and it was going to cost a decent amount of money to repair, and then getting the parts was even more of a job. So Mike did go ahead and order a new one that will be here. I thought he said today or tomorrow. That's a pretty important piece of equipment out there at the lab.
Just for verification, what's an incubator do?
It keeps a pretty constant humidity and temperature for all of our lab samples and bottles that we test, so. And then the charger for the EV grant was shipped and will be here, I suppose, tomorrow. It was supposed to arrive today and never did. So after that gets here, I'll get ahold of Bob's and hopefully we can get that project going. And then I've been sending out quite a few letters for mowing again. Just reminder that lawns are supposed to be at six inches or less.
Okay. Next on the agenda is police.
The only thing I have to share is the north side tornado siren is down right now. So I did contact Raycon. They're supposed to be coming to look at it this week and see if they can find out what's going on. July 2nd through the 9th during our fireworks, we had one complaint, and that was on a permitted display. So actually, not too bad for one week. Tomorrow, we'll be doing a department meeting with the officers discussing department stuff and then also with county attorney's office. And then we're going to be going to human trafficking training tomorrow night that will be presented by the state. And then we're just getting Blake ready for the academy next month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Administration.
It's just been so crazy. I forgot to make a list of what I've been doing. Basically, auditors were here most of last week, finished up this morning. So now we are just in a waiting period until the state releases the audit program because they're doing some changes with leases. So we're going to continue and do as much as she can, you know, getting everything ready. But now we have to wait for the state to release that. There's a couple of things I need to get to them yet this week, but otherwise, everything went pretty good, so.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise, just busy with lots of stuff.
Okay. Number four, any committee updates?
The housing committee met, but nothing exciting happened. There was a two-alliant energy price outlook webinars, and they announced that they're not filing a rate case in 2021, so base rates and usage charges will not change in 2022. That's for all classes. They give, they develop average bills for each class, and in the classes that would affect us, residential is expected to go up from 2021 to 2022 by 7.2%. General service, which is city hall, library, theater, 7.3%, and large general service, which is for us, the fitness center, 12.4%. And the increases are due to increased fuel costs, expiration of the tax benefits rider, which was keeping bills down. And this is just weird. Underperformance of wind generation in 2021, meaning that they didn't collect enough money in 2021, so now they have to collect it in 2022, raising the rates. And so compared to those 7.2% or 3% increases and 12.4% increases, I'd note that SolarPro, our rates will be going up 3% a year. That's compared to an average of 4.6% from Alliant over the last five years. They're, they used to be kind of fun webinars, but now they pre-record everything, and you can't ask questions live, and they're really dull, but they do give some information.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple.
Okay.
So we had the library meeting last week, and I just thought this was kind of noteworthy, the number of new patrons that they've had. So before COVID, during 18, 19 fiscal year, they had 99 new patrons. During COVID, in 1920, they had 89 new patrons. And for fiscal year '21, '22, they had 235 new patrons sign up for cards.
Wow.
So I thought that was good.
Yep.
And then the chamber meeting, just a reminder that they'll be having at the Chamber Golf outing on August 10th, and it's $90 a team, three-person teams. The Broken Road Bar Side is open now. And then the Veterans Affairs are going to be putting up, they donated two flagpoles and campsite, donate a flagpole to Steve McCarville Memorial Park to put around the sign there. And then there'll be three flags there, the US flag, Iowa flag, and a cadet flag.
Cool.
And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
They had a fitness center meeting this last week. Basically, the membership is up again, which I thought was pretty good for during the summer. Normally, you lose a lot more. They had really good summer camps this year. Brandon's talking about adding a nature camp for smaller children, which I thought was kind of good, you know, taking them out to the nature center and doing that for a while. And then there was some discussion on the pickleball project that there's some transferring of money going on. But otherwise, the other meeting they had was the, their meeting on their pledge cards, I can pass this around to everybody, where they're looking at getting pledges for the new project in the fitness center. They're not asking for any, any city help or any city money now. And basically, they want to get it all with pledges, which, well, you know, good luck.
So what, what are they proposing?
You can read some of that.
Is there a dollar amount they're hoping for in there? A total?
No, not really.
Okay.
I don't think it says. A $230,000 upgrade is just around the corner. So if it's okay, I'll keep it and I'll
Make some copies.
Make copies and I'll email it.
Yeah, there you go.
So the Theater Commission met last Monday. They've got live entertainment booked through December. Friends of the Theater, they invited the people, there was five couples interested. They invited those five couples to kind of go over what the purpose of Friends of the Theater is as far as volunteering and helping out where it's needed. And they're still open to inviting more people. Anyone interested can contact Wendy and get on the list. And then
Is that power for like, helping with events, or what do they?
Helping with events, just general, general holes that fall into staffing. And it's not necessarily staffing, but it could be something as simple as opening the doors when we have live entertainment and helping people in, that, that type of thing. Things that the commission's already doing, but it would be in addition to the commission. So it's just kind of to help out so we don't have to staff as many people. And then in, in time when fundraising efforts need to be done, the theory is that the Friends of the Theater would take that on and help out with that.
True.
And the other thing that I thought was really neat was the Maliner family came and toured the theater. The Maliners ran the theater for a number of years. They actually lived in the apartment that's above the lobby. They, they ended up sending a really nice thank you letter and a donation towards the theater, so we want to make sure we thank them for that. But other than that, it's moving along as planned.
Anybody else?
I was just going to ask Michelle. I haven't heard anything from the engineering group on the sidewalk program. Nobody's gotten in touch with me.
Oh, they're supposed to show up tomorrow.
Well, yes, I actually just had a voicemail on my phone when I came back that Steve will be here tomorrow. His first appointment's at nine. I think he has two, then he has, maybe he just has one at nine and then two later in the day. I'm supposed to call him back tomorrow morning, and he'll give me more of an update. Does tomorrow work for you? Because he was the first I heard of when I came back.
We'll discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, you were supposed to email.
Yeah, I have had nothing. No phone calls, no messages.
The only other thing I was going to add when Rich was talking about the pickleball courts is on July 28th is the last family fun night, and that's at Evans Park, and they're going to kind of showcase that, and also the Gaga Ball Court there, too, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Your name tag's going to fall off there, buddy. There, there you go. Yep, all right, thank you. Any other committee reports?
And your microphone is fixed.
Okay. If not, we'll move on to business. Number one, Tim Wilson from Dixon Engineering to discuss proposal water tower repainting project. If you want to come on up.
Good evening. I trust, I was here in May.
Do you want to make sure your mic's on, too? I don't know if it is. Thank you. Yep, there we go.
I was here in May and visited with you in regards to the tower project, and then I came back in June, early June, to perform the inspection and do the adhesion testing. Did you all receive copies of my letter from them? I could hand you another one if it's useful to you, or if you've got them. But, okay, great. Anybody else need one or want one?
This was about the adhesion test, yes, okay.
Yes. Unfortunately, the adhesion results were not what we were hoping for when I visited with you in May. The adhesion rating on the legs and some of the lower portions of the tank was quite good, but on the upper portions of the tank and the roof, it's quite poor. The ASTM ratings for those rank between one and five, and I would call the legs and some of the lower places where I was able to take the readings, a four or a five.
Which is good.
Which is good.
Yep.
This is all before I climb, so I'm like, well, this is looking good. This is looking good. I get up on the, on the balcony and up on the roof of the tank, and I would rate those more as a zero or a one, primarily because where the, where you make the cuts and you, and you remove your tape, if you remember from your reports, you're actually pulling paint from even further away from where your cuts are, and that's where you start to see the zero or one type grades or ratings. So that coating is not a good candidate for an overcoat. You would be in a situation where you'd spend, you'd throw a lot of good money at putting paint on top of that, and it wouldn't hold. You would start to see that fall off over time. So where we're at is kind of a little bit of a change in the project. Instead of a potential for an overcoat, we're in a situation where it'd be a full blast and removal and repaint. And what I had done in visiting with both Michelle and Drew back in early June, we put together kind of a revised cost summary of anticipated cost estimates associated with that work, and you should have gotten a copy of all that as well, I assume. Ends up being a big number, right? And that's one of those that, you know, the pricing of this type of work and the bids that we're seeing opened, particularly this year, everything's coming in a little bit higher. And paint costs are no exception, but then also just the, the steel prices for the little bit of metalwork that was included in this job, and also, you know, just the, just the exterior painting with the containment ends up being the large number. And those numbers were reflected in that cost estimate. In conversations I have with Drew and a couple emails I traded back and forth with Michelle, she just thought maybe it would be a good time for me to come back. You know, that's where we're at. That's where we would start with our specification process to put that project together. But I know that that changes things financially considerably for what the anticipated cost of this project would be, and I didn't know what type of a bid climate you would be looking towards, you know, whether you'd be looking at a 23 project still, or where you stood with that. So at, first, I thought maybe it'd just be appropriate to answer questions if you had some from my, from my report from, from the inspection I performed in, in early June, and then anything additional related to the cost summary or anything that I've presented since then.
One question I had, in the new summary, it talks about wet interior repaint. That was not in the original, right?
It was not, and it wouldn't have to be in this one either. However, at the same time, when you have all of that equipment on site, I wanted to provide that as a number so that she could see. There's some economy of scale, obviously, associated with the mobilization, the equipment, the blast rig, having all of that here. That would be a larger number if you only sought to do it separate further down the road. So I included that just as a, as a point of reference, I guess, so to speak.
So we'll have to drain the tower to do this big project, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So then, as long as it's drained, it would probably make a lot of sense to do the interior as well?
You would have to drain it even to do the exterior, just because of condensation and, and making sure that the exterior has a good dry surface to stick to. But yes, there's, there's obviously economy of scale associated if you've got the tank out of service, rather than having to take it out of service again in the future. It would be a good time to do the whole thing.
What would the timeframe be on that whole project, would you guess?
Six to eight weeks.
Really?
It depends largely on the crew, obviously, you know, and weather. Projects like this, in, in most communities, we shoot for kind of a spring window or a fall window, and stay away from the summer months if at all possible, because that's when everybody's demand is the highest. When the, when, it's, it's just largely dependent on the quality of the contractor, you know, that's awarded the bid. And, you know, there's, there's not a lot you can do to control that. You know, you'll, you'll get a range of bids typically. You can have, you know, we'll make recommendations based on contractors that, that bid, and if you, I, I can think of a half dozen contractors off the top of my head that they would be six weeks or less. And then I can think of some others that would be struggling at eight. It just largely depends on who you end up with. That's public bidding, I guess. You've probably seen that in other projects, too, I assume.
You may comment that the paint thickness was four and five down on the legs and lower extremities, but the top was zero to one?
That, that's not the paint thickness, that's the, the grading scale for the, for the adhesion testing. So I can pull up these pictures here.
Can you tell how many coats are on there?
How many coats?
Yeah.
Well, they didn't come all the way off down to the steel, every place where I pulled. But I do have that information, yes.
Then you can answer Gary's question.
Yep. I want to answer Gary's question first, and I'll show you what I was talking about here. What the ASDM test ratings are showing is, the pictures, like, for those of you that have a copy of this as well, picture four and five, those would be a, a test rating of four or five.
Okay.
These, where the paint is coming off from further away from where the cut was made, those would be a rating of zero to one.
So the thickness is the same, it's just
The paint thickness is the same, but how well the paint is stuck to the previous coat.
They did a poor job of prepping it the last time.
Basically. Potentially could be a poor job of prep, of surface prep, but it could also be related to just these areas tend to bake a little bit more in the sun. This, these are sidewall, this is the roof. Those areas, they, they're, they're much flatter surfaces. They garner a lot more heat throughout the day than some of the lower portions of the legs. It's just a hard place for a coating to live.
I heard you make note that the last time you mentioned that they brush the paint on now?
Yes, we were
This was sprayed the last time.
And that, from our experience, particularly when you get to intermediate and top coats, you get much more consistent coverage by rolling and brushing. Spray, you tend to get really thick, really thin, really thick, really thin, depending on where they're at with their stroke for the, for the paint. Whereas with a, with a brush or a roller, you get much more consistent coverage.
Okay.
The, the prime coats, those have been, you know, we'll often have, particularly when there's containment up, we might spray a prime coat because that's your first initial, and just to kind of help keep moving things along, but particularly when you get to those intermediate and top coats.
We're going to have to take this all the way down to bare metal and start square one.
Yes.
So it probably will be a spray coat, then it'll be brushed.
The, the initial prime will be a spray, because they'll be able to do that under containment, but after that, the rest is all brush and roll.
Okay, so the contractor you're saying is probably struggling six to eight weeks, he's probably going to be notoriously spraying then, right?
Well, quite often, they will, yes, potentially, but, but also quite often, you know, we get into a number of conversations with contractors, but they would like to spray everything, obviously, but that's why we specify. And, and part of our onsite services is to make sure that they're doing what's specified. We don't just turn them loose and show up and check it when they're done. We're here on site, monitoring, paying attention to what they're doing to make sure that it's applied per specifications.
So if we go through and we do, we do everything according to the instructions that you guys provide, we go through and we put the containment up and we blast this and strip it down, put the primer back on, put the paint on, what are we looking at life expectancy?
We see typical overcoat windows between 15 and 18 years.
15 to 18 years. Who signs off on that at the end? When it's all said and done, when the paint's dried, who gives it the final approval?
We do.
The engineering firm?
Yes.
So?
Yeah, before the tank is put back into service, we perform a final inspection. Yeah, I might have visited with you a little bit the last time I was here in front of you and spoke of our onsite services, which I, that would be the, the secondary portion of our contract, which would verify that they're following the specifications while they're completing the work. And at the end of it, we're also doing, we do the punch list, develop the punch list, ensure that all items are completed per specification, and then we sign off and say that it is complete before the tank's put back into service.
Okay. Any type of guarantee by anybody on it?
There is typically, you know, what we see in the industry is a year warranty, and we'll perform a year warranty inspection, both of the interior and exterior, if you, if you opted to do the wet interior as well. In a year's time, if there is a flaw or something that was missed, or a pinhole in the coating, or something that would cause that coating, you know, to, to any type of rust or corrosion, that'll show up in a year in the wet interior, undoubtedly. Shows up very quickly. The exterior, we perform that as a warranty inspection as well at a year. Many communities select a year for a warranty, some select two. I don't have many that have gone much further than that, but a year to a two-year warranty on the interior and exterior is what we typically see in our front-end documents. The other question was the thickness of the paint itself, and I do have some of that information from our inspection report last year. For the most part, looking, I'm, I'm just glancing through, but from legs, riser, sidewell, sidewall, roof, somewhere in the neighborhood, dry film thickness readings that we noticed were between 11 and 15 mils in all of those locations. So you've got a fair amount of paint on there. Obviously, not more than part of what we would, our proposal and what we reflected in our initial report is once you start and you blast back down to bare steel, this tank should be able to be overcoated at least two more times. So you can get out to that 45 years. You know, at the end of 15 years, overcoat, another 15, overcoat. You can get out to that 45-year rate before you have to blast back down to bare steel. Where you ran into a problem here is that could be a product of, of craftsmanship and the way the paint was applied, could be just the, the coating system that was used at the time didn't hold up as well, but you didn't make it to much beyond that 15 years before, you know, you, you can't make another overcoat as wet ones do.
Years.
Yeah, they use some type of paint that, that when they sprayed, it literally, I mean, that far away, and it just, he explained it to me at the time when they did it out there. I mean, it literally dries on contact, and it's supposed to mitigate your, your drift and your oversprays and stuff like that. But when they're doing the top, it's, I mean, it's always windy on top that tower.
Yes.
So.
It's Iowa. But the, the, the full containment system, you'd have up over curtain over the side, and then there's also a bonnet on top to protect that, any fugitive dust or debris or paint from making its way out the top of the system. Our systems that we, that are included, what we based our cost estimates on that we provided for you is a four coat system. So a full coat of prime, an intermediate, I'm out of misspoke, I apologize. I want to make sure I say it the right way. Yeah, four coats. So a coat of prime, a full coat of epoxy, intermediate coat of urethane, and a top coat of urethane. And each one of those, when it comes into our onsite services, each one of those coats has specific cure times, has mil thickness requirements, so that your total system after it's applied makes a total mil rating, you know. So every one of those coatings has a required mil thickness range that has to be met before they're allowed to apply the next coat.
And that's the external?
Yeah, and internal.
Internal.
That, that, the first one that I spoke of was the external paint system. The internal paint system, very similar. It's a three coat epoxy system.
So the external paint is, what'd you say was not an epoxy and?
A urethane.
Urethane, it is.
Yep. The exterior coat is a urethane, and that's primarily what is going to give you that gloss and sheen. The coatings that you have on your tank now is more of a acrylic type, so was it ever very shiny?
No.
Yeah. So that would be a difference than what you will see with this. It will have shine, it will have gloss, it will have luster. And that's the point of getting that shine on there at that 15 to 18-year mark, is when you start to see that start to degrade a little, you start to get a little bit loss of gloss, but then making sure that you can power wash that exterior and provide the overcoat like we originally were hoping to be able to do here.
Is there anything we have to worry about, the paint coming off of it?
Yes.
That's with the containment and?
The containment, so they can capture that. You do have lead paint, lead-based paint on this tank, so that will be captured as part of this and will need to be remediated as part of this. The, the primary way in which they do that, obviously, the contractor, and that is written into our specifications, that they have to, you know, we have to alert them that that exists so that they protect themselves, and that's also built into their bid for their disposal costs for removing the media.
These prices that you provided earlier, does that include for the, the capture and the lead, and these things are ready, or?
The most recent ones that I've provided, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We haven't talked about a color at all. Is there one that's better than the other? I know it's a light blue now.
Much like about colors of conversation with my wife when she pan the basement, I stay out of that.
Okay.
But in a, a more direct answer to your question, I, I, we're starting to see a lot more tanks be what we call two-toned. So the bottom color, where you start to see some of that mold and mildew attach, you know, Iowa's such an agricultural state, you get a lot of dirt, things like that, blowing around the fall year that attaches itself to the condensation, the wet surfaces on that tank. A darker color on the bottom seems to hide that a little bit better. I will also say that today's coatings and the urethane systems that we're specific, that we would specify here are slicker than that acrylic coating, so it has a tendency to slough that off. It doesn't stick as bad as what some of the older coatings used to, but we still see a lot of communities that choose to two-tone, put a darker color on the bottom and maybe a white on the top, or an off-white on the top. But, but honestly, the, the sky's the limit. a white on the top, or an off-white on the top, but honestly, the sky's the limit, whatever color you choose.
Is there a difference in price? I know in the auto industry, red can be crazy high-priced sometimes.
Don't see much of a difference cost-wise by the color.
Okay. Do you have a reference that you've done lately that has gone through exactly what we're talking about?
I do, probably, and maybe the closest to you that we're, I'm completing two projects there is in Mason City.
Okay.
You can reach out to Mark Rahm, the city engineer, or Don Thorson, the water superintendent. They had a 500,000 gallon Spheroid, so a different style tank than this one, and that one is back on, in service as of last week. And then they also have a 500,000 gallon radial arm, which is a leg tank, but a few more legs than yours has. That one should be in service within the next week and a half.
Okay.
And I wouldn't have given your names if they didn't say they were happy with me.
Right, right. Do you have any that worked?
No, I'm teasing, but, but yes, they've been, all together, they've been very happy with the services. The contractor that completed that work, one of the things that I'm proud of, you know, I maybe didn't mention this the last time I was here, so I'm a water operator, you know, that's how I got started in the drinking water business, I did that for 25 years, before I started with Dixon. One of the things I'm the most proud of with Dixon is with 41 years old this year, so we have a large base of contractors that, when, you'll have to publicly bid, and you'll post it, but then we will also send that bid out to our, our list of contractors to see if you get bids. And what I'm most proud of when I come to a bid opening is when I've got five or eight bids, and they're from lots of different places. The contractor that's completing the work in Mason City is from Texas. They're not, it's not to prohibit a local contractor from bidding the work, but I like to see as much exposure as I can get from as many different places, and then I feel good when it's a contractor that we've worked with in the past and had good success with.
Right.
So the more exposure that we, as a company, can get you in that bidding process, that's what we shoot for.
Is there a company out of Clear Lake that still does it?
Uh, they don't exist anymore.
They don't, okay.
No. No, there's, there's a couple of painters still here in Iowa, they do good work. I don't have any complaints. They don't bid on a lot of our work, but that's here and there.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have one way or the other on them.
All right. Do you have an onsite manager when they're here working? Does Dixon Engineering have an onsite manager there keeping an eye on things?
Yes, that's, that's that onsite services portion that I would come back and amend our contract. I would be the project manager for the project, but we would have what we consider, we call them an RPR, or Resident Project Representative, that is based onsite while that work is being completed. And there are specific, our specifications are written in such a way that we call them stop points, so for example, I mentioned the, you know, there's a stop point at the end of the prime coat, so that we're allowed to check for coverage, mil thickness, and make sure that everything got done correctly. There's another stop point at each, you know, epoxy coat, each intermediate urethane coat. There's also stop points that are related to equipment, ambient conditions, you know, if, everybody likes to start first thing in the morning, so you can get the best out of the day, while the ambient conditions in the morning are usually typically, even this time of year, not great for painting. It's usually more like nine, 10 o'clock before it's the right conditions to blast or paint. So making sure that they're following those, and they're not painting outside those ambient condition windows is another stuff.
Gary would probably do that stuff for free.
I could.
The inspection.
I could.
Keep an eye on him, living right across the street, but I guess we'll have, any other questions? We've got some stuff to think about, I guess.
I guess, you know, based off your experience, we're going into July, takes a month to put this together, set it off for bids, realistically, we gotta be looking at spring of '23. Would you agree?
Typically, I don't like to see fall projects be let after July, so yeah, I think your spring of '23 would be a better window.
Okay.
We're probably, we could have the specifications put together in three weeks or less, but again, we're at the end of July, I don't like to see, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to work if, based on the direction you give us, but I would, I think you'd have much better success bid climate-wise for spring of '22.
And we'd be bidding.
How rushed of a job is it? Could it be put off till spring of '24, based on the condition?
That, that's a good point as well, Michelle, the, kind of the advantage of something where you're at now is the exterior coating is no longer able to accept an overcoat. It's purely an issue of aesthetics at this point. If it isn't a '23 project, it could be a '24 project, it could be a '25 project, nothing's really going to get any worse.
Okay.
You're, you're in a situation where it's gonna have to be fully blasted and repainted. So the steel itself will not deteriorate to the extent that it'll cause you a problem in the next three to, two to three years, you know, it's really just an issue of aesthetics for you at this point. The other thing, I mentioned in my letter, I've got trouble for one more thing, another opportunity that exists because this has to be a full blast and repaint, you have a lot of antennas on this tank, and I'm not sure what they all are, you know, whether it's local internet providers, local cellular providers, I'm not sure. All of that stuff will have to come off.
Sure.
In order to blast and repaint this tank. And the opportunity that I see is a lot of the way in which it is up there isn't necessarily a good standard, there's a lot of electrical tape, there's a lot of zip ties, there's a lot of, I don't want to use the analogy of baling wire and hay rope, but yeah, kinda. So having an opportunity to have all of that removed, and then we can help with the design of reinstalling it, so that the providers that have that equipment on there get it reinstalled in an appropriate way that's not detrimental to the coating or to the safety of the tank.
Duct tape.
Yeah.
At least it's out of waste groups, huh?
And what do those people normally do while their antennas aren't on the tank?
Yes.
I mean, because like my neighbors use one of those antennas off there.
Sure. So for those, you know, we would want, as part of this, we would want to have some conversations to get the notices out for when this project is going to happen, and basically provide them notice that they have to be removed. The city can work with them to provide alternate locations, if they can still get coverage from other towers that are, any other places where that equipment is mounted in town is great, if not, some type of a temporary structure that they can put up at their cost and their expense. A lot of it's got to do with your lease documents, and without looking at those, I can't really make you some good recommendations, but.
Thank you.
But the city's lease documents would dictate how that procedure needs to work. And most of what I see on that tank is probably more local internet-type equipment, do you have a cell provider up there that you know of?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's two different internet providers.
Two different internet, do you have Verizon or ATT or?
It's MyEnergy and.
LTD?
LTD.
But no cellphone stuff is there?
And then there's like a ham radio.
Okay, so no cellphone providers.
I don't believe so. What's that?
CUSB, aren't they up there with something on top of that tower?
No.
They may do, maybe used to be, but I don't think so anymore.
But we would work with you, you know, if we can review those lease documents, we can help put together the letters to let them know, you know, it's probably very well spelled out in those lease documents how much notice you have to give them.
Right.
And then, you know, whatever revenue you generate from leasing them that space, that helps to offset some of those costs, but it's ultimately their cost to remove the equipment, their cost to have a temporary pole, their cost to reinstall the equipment. However, you as the city, since it's your asset that they're installing those, that equipment back on, you get some say-so on how it goes back up, usually, the way those lease documents are written.
Wasn't there a discussion about mounting something up on top of that tower, about that railing going straight up, and then a 90 over, and then mounting off of that?
Yes, ideally, you know, what we included as one of the items here is a new roof handrail, new step-off platform, and get as much of that equipment off of the balcony as you can. That would get it up higher. Most providers prefer that anyway, it gives them better coverage, but then also it gets it so that it helps to reduce the amount of safety issues associated with having it on the balcony. Balcony's not very wide, you know, you're looking at maybe two foot at the most going around the exterior of that tank, and when you've got pipe mounts and coax all draped all the way around that balcony or handrail, it makes it difficult to be safe and be on the tank. So moving that equipment up to the top, and also having some say-so on how the coax and the cable is routed, instead of zip ties and electrical tape.
You have a form of mounting standards?
Yes. The correct brackets going up the legs, the correct brackets going up, particularly with the, with the step-off platform, you can follow that to get to the roof and not have to kind of wind your way up through some of the legs. And I don't know if any of those in my, if that shows up very well in the pictures that I've provided. No, because I was just focused on showing you the, the adhesion, but I have a lot of pictures of antennas and coax on the roof that it's not great.
Yeah, that southwest side is pretty well covered by that tower.
And it, it's not uncommon, but we see it a lot where, you know, they start up the ladder, they get up there, they start mounting equipment, and they have all the brackets that came with the kit, and then sooner or later, they run out of the brackets that came with the kit, and they're at the auto parts store buying hose clamps and other things to finish the job.
Zip ties.
Yeah. So it's very common, next to the ladder, you see some good stuff, and then when you get away from the ladder, you start to see not the good things.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will go ahead and continue on with, is that the type of bidding window that we're shooting for them would be a spring of '23?
I guess we'll have to talk about that, I don't know, budget-wise, where it's gonna play and.
I guess the thing, I kind of had in my head, since this got so big, was possibly bonding for it, so possibly putting it off another year so that we could bond the same time we're doing the Seventh Street and the downtown project.
Spring of '24.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you're saying that the structure's in good shape, the steel's in good shape, we, you know, I mean aesthetically, it's still good-looking, you know, it, if you look for spots, you find them, but it might not be a bad idea to hold that till '24.
Right.
Do the letters, get all the information out, body it's being out.
Yeah.
That'll give us time to decide what color, too.
Yeah.
Sure, and I could bring you a color palette book with the sky being.
We'll leave that up to Alex.
But.
Yeah, we'll do some CIP planning this year and kind of get our timing out.
So what we will do, the contract that you agreed with us so far was for the specifications, we'll continue to put those together so that the package is ready, and that way you have some opportunity, if something changes, I can stay in touch, but obviously if circumstances change and you wanted to go sooner, you'll have the package ready.
So if you were gonna do a spring project, what's the best time to go out for bids?
November, December.
Okay.
Not much, I don't like to see anything go out much past the middle of December with the holidays and the way things fall. That way, you know, contractors are hungry at that point, they're looking for their, to fill their spring calendar. The other opportunity, when, and maybe not as important for today's conversation, but when you get to that point, you can also separate out separate construction windows, you know, a window that starts in April and has to be done by the end of May, or a window that starts in, you know, towards the end of August, maybe after, immediately after Labor Day, and is done by mid-October, you know, to hit those windows, and if you can provide those options for contractors, oftentimes, you might get better pricing, you know, if they see that bid come out in late December and their spring calendars are already kind of full, they might give you a better price for fall, so.
Obviously, the people that do the paint won't be the ones that are gonna do the construction work, would it be advisable to do some of the, the ladders and the overhead and the fall?
The painters will do the construction work.
They do everything, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The contractor that completed those tanks that I mentioned in Mason City, they started the process, it gives them a little bit of a leeway in time because they can start that work while the tank is still full, you don't have to take it out of service yet to perform the welding work on the exterior, but they completed all that work themselves.
What kind of shape is the other tank gonna be in a year and a half?
It'll be fine.
Should be, I mean, it's not, it's not being used, so.
It's not deteriorating.
Right.
With the winter.
I know Drew doesn't have any concerns about it, about using it, yeah, we'll have to obviously run our well pumps more frequent, but that's okay as well, so.
Well, the pumps have all been reconditioned, we should be in good shape there.
Yep.
The other alternative is, is, you know, if you have any concerns about, because how much, what's the size of the other tank?
I believe it's 100,000.
150?
100. I was gonna say, I thought it was 100,000.
Okay. You know, so you're considerably smaller, you're gonna cycle a lot more and keep it full. If you had capacity-type issues, we can also work into the bidding process for additional, some communities end up with, like semi-tankers, that they'll position, or buffaloes around town that they can, they can pull from and provide as pressure vessels to help kind of balance that out, their spending. So obviously, if you can make it work with the tank that you have, it's a better option.
By that time, Doug works for the business, he can use this.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did skip over the comments from the audience, sorry about that, is there any comment, comments from the audience? No, okay. All right, number two. Number two, request for sewer adjustment for water, not entering the sanitary sewer system from Amy Weimar. Can you give us a little background on that?
Um, yeah, I got the letter just the other day, obviously, it's pretty clear that I did not enter the sanitary sewer system. I guess I'm not real sure why her sewer, well, I guess if it keeps pumping, what I don't understand is if the water's going into the backyard and coming back in, why was it using so much? I guess I'm, that part I'm not real sure of.
I understand the fresh, she's talking about fresh water.
Right.
I mean, where would that be coming from?
But she says it comes back, that water was coming right back into the sump pump and being, so I guess I just, I don't understand the whole situation of what's going on up there.
I think it's a certain kind of sump pump that uses water.
I, I talked to Vickries about this, because I was talking about, do I need a battery on my sump, and he said, well, as long as you've got water, you can use that to pump the other water, and I'm like, uh, this sounds like I don't want to do this, but, but that's right, it is drawing more water to pump the water that's in the sump.
Sounds weird.
I know.
It's drawing, it's drawing city water?
Yes, that's what they explained to me, I don't have it, so I can't attest to how it works.
So it's got a line running to the sump of city water that's on demand.
That was my understanding, we could call up Vickries or Goshes.
And that's kind of the way she explains it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of redundant system.
They don't have a sump pump?
I've, we've run into this before, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think she's making it up.
Yeah, no, I wasn't questioning that, I just don't understand the whole process.
Could it be something like a siphon? I don't know, I'm just guessing.
Right. But like I'm saying, it's, it's pretty clear that it obviously didn't go to the sanitary sewer.
Okay.
It was going into her backyard, she has it plumbed accordingly, or correctly, I should say.
Was she charged, she wasn't charged sewer rates, was she?
Yes, because she'd be charged that sewer rate on the water that she was using.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I see where you're coming from.
So we would not forgive the water part, so the amount of water that she had to use for her sump pump, she still has to go pay for, because she used that water.
Paid for the water.
But then get a credit for the 208 for the sewer portion of it.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Amy and Jan?
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Next, number three, resolution approving the change order number three for runway drainage improvements project for the Cresco Municipal Airport.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
And then the last thing is the, the claims, and there's one on there for sludge removal from the sewer plant that was initiated through Avica. They contacted, they being Avica had contacted Pladsons, can I just grab this? And I believe they're out of Wakan, and I don't, does everybody have a copy of this? Okay. They hauled.
Should be 36 loads.
36 loads out of the digesters, not out of the holding tank.
Correct.
And do you know how many gallons that equals?
Oh, we figured it out, and I.
1300?
No, it's, I think, I believe it's just roughly seven thousand times a thirty-six, so...
Seven thousand gallons of load.
Right.
Semi, they're using semi-tankers?
Yep.
Pass that down and then pass it back. So apparently, what happened, from Avica, not Shane, but John, supposedly told Pladsons to haul it out, and said that he had talked to me, and I said it was okay to do that, and the city would pay for it, and that's incorrect. I never, we never talked about it, I don't know where he came up with that, but that's a lie. So either way, we needed to get that out of there, we're full out there right now, correct?
We were, until that, yep. Now, we are, we are currently sitting where we would have been if Mike was able to haul sludge this spring, so we're sitting in a good position, but obviously, our big storage tank is still full of sludge that is over that one-hundred threshold, so that's the sludge that we still need to come up with a plan with them to get rid of.
With selenium, the threshold for the selenium is what you're saying?
Correct, yep. To be land-applied.
Would they be billing that back to us also?
Uh, Pladsons will not be able to haul it this fall, we've been made aware of that already, they, they have their own customers that they need to take care of in the fall, so it'd have to be through some other company that Avica and we will have to agree to.
Who's on the hook for that?
For which one?
For the hauling of that, once we get the clearance to clean that pit out, the holding tank.
Well, we don't really need clearance to haul it out, I guess we just have to come up with a plan between Avica, DNR, and us that is conducive to getting rid of it, being it's over the hundred milligrams per liter, whatever it is, milligram per kilogram dry, to land-apply it, we can't, unless we bulk it, then if we bulk it, there's a cumulative effect that we can only put so much on each field, so then we're really bulking up those fields, and we have potential to lose the ground that we currently have to spread the stuff, so...
We wouldn't be in this position right now if our holding tank wasn't on hold from the DNR, correct? I mean, if that, we wouldn't have to clean that, that digester out if that tank would have been emptied on its normal schedule.
Correct.
We'd have been fine.
Correct, yep.
But right now, we're on hold, waiting approval.
Yes.
And we don't need approval, per se, do we?
Correct, no, I mean, we just have to come up with a plan. Exactly, yeah.
So basically, with our operations to keep running, we have to keep the digester empty.
Yeah, yes, we, like I said, we are currently good, because they emptied two of the tanks, which, one was our big, the other was the middle, so it's three-hundred-thousand gallons worth of storage, as we said. Pladsons hauled roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons.
So what's the time on that?
We're good till spring, summer, so...
Right now, we are.
Correct.
Typically, we would haul it in the fall?
Yes.
How many gallons is in that, in that harvester?
That'll hold roughly five-hundred-thousand, and it's pretty, pretty well full, but we will not be able to empty it out completely, because there's a piping system at the bottom that have to be covered, it has to have one or two feet of sludge over the top, otherwise the pipes freeze.
Yep.
So we will build, haul all of it. I'd say another three-hundred-thousand, maybe three-fifty at the max. And that's going to be more of a process, because obviously, that's over, so it's going to have to be bulked, or whatever the DNR allows us to do with that, and if they don't allow us to...
When will we have that information?
I'm not sure, what's that?
When will we have that information?
I think if we came up with a plan with Avica, and we submitted it to the DNR, we would just need their approval on that, so if we say, hey, we have this, the selenium level of this is roughly one-hundred-and-sixteen, we want to look at bulking with line, per load, or whatever, they would have to obviously sign off on that, but if they signed off on it, then we would just have to find a place to go with it.
And that probably won't happen until crops are out.
Correct.
So, yeah, we really can't do much until this fall.
Right. We don't have any...
We really aren't paying their fine or anything that's due.
We're still looking at that, they're getting us some more documentation on the loss of, proof of the loss of pounds of grease.
The selenium, any selenium at all on corn land or bean land, is that not desirable, or?
I wouldn't say that, I think it's just a certain level that you can get to, and with each load that's high, then obviously, you're getting to that threshold that much quicker, and once it meets its certain, a certain threshold, that field is done, you cannot, you can no longer haul the sludge out there that has the selenium in it.
Forever.
Right, like that, it doesn't decrease over time, it's just, it's done, so...
Well, selenium naturally found in minerals in the ground anywhere, but this just amplifies it.
Right.
So in the past, the farmers have come and gotten, gotten it, right?
No.
Taken to their fields?
Yep, yep, we have a tractor with a small tanker, so it takes, it takes quite some time to get it all taken care of, but...
But we didn't have to, there wasn't a charge of any kind, right?
Right, right, as long as they were allowing us to put that on their property, we were just doing it for free.
Because they, they benefit from it.
Absolutely, yep.
So when they were out to the sewer plant...
They, meaning?
The people that...
Pladsons?
Yeah.
Yep.
Did anyone maybe check with them to see what they were doing?
Well, yeah, we set them all up, but they came up with this plan with Avica, and Avica...
And we had no idea that they were going to bill us until we got the bill?
Correct, yes, it was never once, we never saw any of the quotes, no nothing, that, that Pladsons sent to Avica. Mike did see them, Michelle didn't see them, nor I, so that's why when we received the bill, it was a little bit of an eye-opener. Correct. Because Avica's the one that took the whole process into their own hands and did all of it.
So we immediately billed them and said they had to pay us by today so that we could get Pladsons paid on time, but we haven't seen a check yet, so...
And we, this was dated, when did we get this, the sixth?
So it's due on the twenty...
And they wanted to be paid on the twenty-first.
I think we need some more information before, I mean...
The problem I have with it, though, is they came and they were very good to work with, that I feel they shouldn't be caught in the pay...
The Pladsons should be caught in the middle of Austin, Avica.
But nobody, nobody on this council, nobody on, on our departments notified and told them, set it up.
Yes, we did. We said they had to get it hauled out.
Correct.
We did.
We told Avica.
We told Avica that they had to get it hauled out.
Yes, not Pladsons, but they hired...
They hired Pladsons.
They hired, yeah, they contacted Pladsons.
Which worked very good.
Yeah.
There aren't too many people that would have let us on their pay ground.
But did we understand that we would be paying for it, too?
That was never addressed with us.
Well, I think that, that there needs to be a little more clarification on if we're going to be reimbursed before we put our taxpayers on, community on, this on their dime, you know, that's, that's a fair amount of money.
But that's...
I understand that...
Everything that we do, we always pay for it and then bill them, and even in our new contract is going to state that all subcontracting needs to go through the city, and then we bill Avica for it, so to me, this is a normal operating, we pay for it, we bill the customer, and we get reimbursed for it, and that's how we do all our...
So what you're basically saying, Michelle, is that we will be billing Avica forty-six-thousand dollars for a haul?
It's already been mailed, yep, or emailed, yep, we already sent the bill to them.
But they were supposed to have it paid by today, and they didn't.
And we haven't set their water and sewer rates yet, right?
Yeah, there's one.
The sewer, or the wastewater agreement hasn't been done yet.
I thought we were moving...
Yeah, but we set the rate by ordinance, so you guys approve that.
The water rates, yeah, the water rates.
The sewer rates, their water rates the same as everybody else in the city, we set their sewer rate.
I mean, they're still under the old agreement until the new agreement comes in.
But the new prices went into effect July first, when we did the extension, the prices, the price increase went into effect.
And how was that received at your meeting on Thursday?
No mention. They, I mean, they know that there's an increase every year, so there's, there's no mention of it.
You're talking water.
I'm talking, right.
They pay the same water rate that everybody in the city pays, and they have a flow, outflow meter, so we set their price for their sewer, and we set it as part of that ordinance.
Right, the ordinance, but then the other agreement is separate from that, that we're working with them right now, correct?
Right, that's more on their limits of what they can send to us, and like, if they go over their limits.
Right.
So what happens if we go ahead and pay the bill, okay, and they decide not to pay it, Avica does?
And we turn it in for exceptions, talk to attorney, whatever.
Let's hope it don't get to that.
What's that?
Let's hope it don't get to that.
Right, absolutely.
I think we have a lot bigger issues that I, I think we need to work with Avica at this point.
Yeah, because we, we currently have close to five-hundred-thousand gallons of sludge that is no good to us, that we can do nothing with, so it's, I don't know, that's a big number.
And as it exists, can't be land-applied, right?
Correct. And if they don't, if the DNR doesn't allow us to bulk it, then I don't know what our options are, to be honest with you. I know there was talk of, what was it called?
Hazardous.
Hazardous waste, or something like that, so then, then you're looking at trying to find somebody to deal with it.
Right, then we're going to be hauling it out of state or...
Correct.
And that's going to be big money.
That's what I'm saying, it's going to be big, big money.
It's going to make this look...
But, but...
I mean, we just need to work with them, I'm just saying we don't...
But this is normal operating procedure, we get a bill, we pay it, we bill, if there's some arrangement, we bill them.
But I got, I got a bad feeling this is going to go a lot deeper than, than this, I mean, we need to get some feedback from the DNR.
But we agree that, that's why we're working on all this other stuff, I'm just saying, I don't think Pladsons should take the hit for it. When they showed up on spur of the moment, they got it land-applied on a hay ground that most people would not let us knife in sludge, they arranged everything, so...
Because if Pladsons would not have shown up, we would be in a world of hurt right now, we would be, we would be over capacity.
So can I make a motion that we go ahead and pay the bill as they are?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion or questions?
I'm still, I still think we need, I don't understand why we can't hold the bill off, we still got to the twenty-first, what's the date today, eighteen, nineteen?
Eighteenth.
Yes, but this council has to approve it before I can pay for it, so I don't have another meeting.
Well...
And it's, and it's fine if you want more discussion on it, but like Michelle said, we don't have another meeting until August first.
First.
I still know the two weeks, and then, then the bill's past due.
Ten days past due, and I would hate to pay out even a one percent.
So it's where, if you, if you approve it, we can pay it sometime in between there, if we get more clarification on whatever it may be that we need to talk about.
And if there was a late fee on it, I mean, Avica is late, too.
Well, right now, we're saying Avica is late, right? It was due, theirs was due, right?
Today, correct?
But they didn't pay it.
Well, there's been a motion in the second, so...
Because if this one, if this one doesn't get paid by the twenty-second, it is, it's made out to the city of Cresco, so the city of Cresco would be late.
Where the ones on, that then they would turn us in.
Not saying that, we discussed with them to see if, we can switch it to have them bill them directly.
Well, they hauled, came to our place and hauled our sludge, so yes, I think any court would say we were liable.
Alex, you haven't been kind of quiet anything before, we, Michelle calls for a vote?
No, I, I think, I think we need to pay Pladsons, because if we hold them up, it's not fair to them, but I agree with Gary, we need to have some dialogue with them about what our plan is for the future, because this is unacceptable, I mean, pushing the bill out the way they've done, and, and they're now past due, is not acceptable, not having a plan in place for the selenium sludge that they caused is not acceptable, I mean, all of these things, and it, it's easy to sit across the highway and not do anything about it when it theoretically doesn't affect them, but if we get into a, a situation where our digester's full again, and we don't have any capacity, we're going to have to haul it out, because we can't even handle it ourselves, even if we wanted to.
Well, the only thing is, I mean, I'm full agreement to everybody here, but the only thing that bothers me, okay, I mean, they're out of spec, so we keep saying it's our plan, it ain't our plan, you know, I mean, whatever I'm saying, let me reverse, it's not their plan, it's really our plan, because we shouldn't be accepting it anymore, if they're out of spec, we shouldn't be getting it, we should be...
It's not clear, I think, doesn't the contract call for the selenium to be undetectable?
Correct.
And that does not mean zero, that means anything up to zero-point-zero-four-somethings.
Zero-point-zero, zero-four.
Um, and so, and so then, after that, you get a concentration, and, and we had all these discussions, and I'm honestly not totally clear, but the, the concentration has to be happening at the digester slash, you know, when it gets dried out, so it's not totally clear to me that they're, under our current contract, out of spec. I don't know that, I don't know enough about the physics, but I, I think I would be reluctant to say that they are violating their current contract, because physically, and we've asked, we can't test to zero-point-zero-zero.
Correct. And really, in our current contract, there was never really anything in there for selenium. Obviously, it's something that we're looking at in the new one, but...
Yeah, I, I think, I don't disagree, I mean, there's selenium coming in, and we're a hundred percent sure it's from them, and so something's wrong, and we had, but we had a generally cordial conversation on Thursday, working through a lengthy and tedious contract, and so I'm not willing to say that things are, you know, at some kind of breaking point at the moment, there's clearly a long way to go.
So the contract went from fourteen pages to forty-five, I believe, so we spent two and a half hours on Thursday going line by line of that contract, and I've come to a pretty good agreement, so I'm hoping that then we're going to take it to our attorneys, and then I can get it to you guys, so then I think you'll feel a lot more comfortable with this new agreement, spelling things out better, so our goal is to have it on our August first council meeting, so we're pushing really hard on trying to get that through. Selenium is a huge discussion item, and...
And right now, we're at the bottom, we're in the backside of this discussion with that, with that harvester full.
Yes.
All right.
And that is a hideous issue.
And they understand it's theirs.
They say they do.
Yeah, okay.
They said they knew this was their responsibility, too, so that's why...
Any other questions or discussion, otherwise, well, Michelle will do a roll-call vote.
The roll-call is to approve the claims as listed. Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
No.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
No.
Buska?
Yes.
So it'll pass by majority vote. Then the next question would be, do you, then we should do a roll-call vote to approve all the other claims besides the, if we would remove the Pladsons, so that I can pay the rest of the bills.
I think that was...
I guess, I thought that's what we did.
I guess by majority, it does, but then I don't have them approving any of the other bills, but I guess it's okay if a majority...
I don't want, I want to, I want to go on the record, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this community to make sure that we don't get in these situations, and I got a bad feeling coming forward, and I'm just getting involved in this here in the last couple of weeks, and, and I'm not comfortable with that, I'll be the first to admit it. No, because that John or whatever's...
But if we don't work with them right now, it's going to get worse, I mean, if they...
Well...
So... So...
And it's not like we knew this bill was going to come to some halt.
I agree.
I mean, that was never part of the conversation that Dave had, that I had, that Mike had, with anybody.
Yeah. By his own statement tonight, he had...
That's what I'm saying. You know, I mean, it's not like we sat down and said, "Yep, just bill us, we'll take care of it, and then we'll bill you." That was never, ever a topic of discussion, never once said to us.
Yeah.
Like I said, Avica took this all on as their own project, and then at the end of it, Pladsons sent us the bill.
And, and, and I don't want to see Pladsons get sideways.
Right.
They're good company, good operators.
That's, that's my biggest thing, is I don't want them caught in the middle of it. Yes, I don't like the whole situation, I'll, I'll admit it, but I don't think they need to pay the price for it. Yes, I know it's taxpayer funds that are being used to pay us at the moment, but I don't know what the right answer would be.
A lot more dialogue going forward.
For sure.
I mean, and I think we all need to be abreast of, of, of what's going on with that, so I'll leave it at that.
Um, have they, they being Avica, said that, yes, they will pay this? Have they informed either one of you that they will pay it?
No.
Or did they say, "We're going to think about it," or what, what was their words?
His word was, "I will check on it."
Yep, 'cause I reached out again today, asking the status of it, and he said that he would check on it, and I may, or sent an email back just saying, "Okay, thank you," just so that way he knows that I received his comment. I'll keep reaching out. What's that?
That's John?
Shane.
Shane, the vice president?
Correct. I mean, it's not like I'll back off on him on getting it paid, but...
Yeah, this by no way means the city is paying for it as our expense, with the understanding that we're going to be billing and collecting from Avica.
Ultimately, if, would we have a leg to stand on if they choose not to pay it, then? Can we assess their property taxes with something like that?
Be just like all our other bills, we'd have to do all the required notices, but yes, I would put it through a collection agency and...
And assess it to their taxes.
So there is a way. So I mean, you guys feel comfortable that we're going to get the forty-six thousand back?
One way or another.
I'm hoping, yeah, I mean, if we don't get this, then we're probably not going to get our five hundred thousand gallons hauled out either, so I, I'm trusting that they're going to be a business in...
Right now, I don't feel like they're good stewards right now, anyway.
I mean, it certainly does tell us, as, as you guys are saying, and I completely agree, that it means we better spell it out in extreme detail about the five hundred thousand gallons we're not paying for it. Don't send us the bill.
But see, Amy, to keep our own sewer running, we're going to have to empty them other tanks just to keep us running in a, you know, next spring, if they decide to hold off on us, the same thing with the smell all the time. You know, they've told us they're going to work on that. I haven't seen much done there. It just seems like the wind's going the wrong direction. I'm getting a better whiff than I used to get.
Um, I have a problem, though, too. Engineers and attorneys have warned us of having them contract with the contractors that are hauling our stuff.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, we still may need to take possession of it and charge them for it. So that's been the advice the attorney's been giving us, that you don't want them hiring somebody and coming in and cleaning your lift station, or taking care of your sludge, because we're still ultimately responsible for where it goes and following all the DNR rules, so...
See, I'm getting back to what I was saying.
I'm worried about, we may have to pay upfront and collect from them, even on that five hundred thousand.
See, I feel like that's our, that should be our plan, going ahead and doing it, not their plan. That's kind of what I meant.
But we're in on that, getting the estimates and the quotes and hiring the people, we should be...
But you're saying we might actually have to pay for it, too, just like we're paying for the Pladsons.
And then charge them back, yeah. That would more seem like, I think we have to do.
Just to make sure we, everything is done to spec.
The, the incident with their, with their fog spill, and, and the amount of the violation, that, that remains where we sent them the violation, that amount, correct?
Correct, but we are looking into the reasonableness of the documentation. But until the DNR, until I have the proof that I can give to the DNR, that the DNR accepts their, show me now how much they have lost, um, we won't even talk about changing the amount until I get DNR approval, that they agree with us, that it doesn't make sense the way this was, the way the sample worked out in the pounds. Because the way it calculated, it was the concentration, and then you convert it to pounds, well, the pounds come out to fifteen thousand pounds of grease. Well, if they had sent us fifteen thousand pounds of grease, we would be so plugged up, and our plant would not be working. So it's not feasible that it can be that much. So, um, I'm just getting proof, and then I'll share with you guys, because I told them, I said, "I can't do anything until DNR approves it and council approves it." So you will look at it before we do any adjustment to that surcharge. But I'm just trying to get all the documentation together first, so...
Yeah, it's not a good deal.
Okay. So we're okay, then, doing it all at once, then? You, you don't want to separate those out?
I think so. I guess as long as majority of the council approves it, that would be fine.
We think that's the motion we made.
Yes.
The reason, you understand what she's saying, is that they're...
Yeah, I did take it separate and do two of them.
But we'll just have those three sign it, and the other two vote no, so...
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on that? If not, that was the end of the agenda.
Make a motion to adjourn.